Sounds like an alarm. You got some music playing, Joe?
You got some music?
Joe, can you?
No music. I have no music.
Okay.
All the chimes, the wind blowing a little bit, nice breeze.
Oh, okay.
Call to order, the city of Wyoming, March seventeenth, twenty twenty, city council meeting. On call at the roll, the following members of the Wyoming City Council were present. Councilmember Lisa Iverson, Linda Jaeger, Dennis Schilling, Claire Luger, and Joe Zieros. Councilmember Zieros will be participating in the meeting remotely from a resident residence at three oh five Val Vista Avenue, Mesa, Arizona, that is open to the public. The city of Wyoming has posted the notice about Council Zieros' remote participation per state statute thirteen D dot point zero two. Councilmember Zieros has posted at his location that he is participating in the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wyoming City Council at seven PM Central Standard Time, and he is actively participating in the Mountain Standard Time at approximately five oh one PM. With that, we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, just as for all.
Alright, so tonight, there is no open forum as we practice our COVID nineteen protocol. We'll start with our agenda approval of minutes, number one, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for March fourth, twenty twenty. If there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by member Luger. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So approved? You abstained? Okay?
Yes, I was at the meeting.
Alright, number two, consider approving the minutes of the work session meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for March fourth, twenty twenty. No questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by member Luger. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. Alright, so passes. Consent agenda, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Does anybody wish to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Pull number three and eight, please.
We'll pull number three and eight. We need a motion to approve consent agenda, four, five, six, seven, and nine. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by member Zieros. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Luger, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those pass. Member Jaeger, number three, please.
On number three, on page six, Rob?
Mm-hmm.
Under opus, are we being double billed for January services?
I apologize, let me take a look here, I don't have a packet in front of me, councilmember Jaeger.
You want me to run it over to you?
Did I highlight it once? No, it's essentially one is where it's split between water and sewer.
Okay.
So you have half of bill out of water and half out of sewer.
Okay. I never seen it, I don't recall it's being split like that, so I asked.
Okay, understood.
Okay, that was it.
Okay.
Move to approve item number three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Number eight?
Okay. Right, it seems that on this, on this part, we're going to get, we're going to file an insurance claim?
Yes, councilmember Jaeger.
Okay, and how likely is this claim to be successful?
The league's insurance, they call it snap, crack, or pop.
Yeah.
And so if it has any of them three criteria, it's paid. But the only problem with this one is you gotta take the shroud off and get way into the generator, get the radiator out. So then as soon as it's out, he'll come and look at it.
Oh, and then we'll find out if the claim's successful?
Right.
Okay. And then if it is successful, how long before we can be reimbursed?
It's probably within three weeks. These are claims already submitted and everything, it's just them sending the check.
Okay, cool. Move to approve number eight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Member Schilling, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so approved. We have some mic feedback over here.
Sure, I can turn it down a little bit.
Thank you. Alright, reports from officer boards, commissions, and department heads, that's ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Does anybody wish to pull for additional comments or questions? Alright, we'll move on to new business, number fourteen. To consider resolution twenty dash oh three thirty-four, a resolution to authorize the purchase of four garage doors for the Wyoming Fire Department from Lake County Doors, Lake Country Doors in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Mr. Linwood?
Actually, this is Mr. Chief Poppy.
Mayor, Mayor of the City Council.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a proposal in front of you to actually replace four garage door openers. Openers that we have are relatively original equipment, and some of the safety features required today don't exist on them. For instance, eyeball lasers at the bottom of the doors that reverse moment, movement. When it's coming down, if something crosses the laser, is one of the issues that they don't have. The other is auto closures, when our vehicles leave in an emergency, sometimes the remotes work, sometimes they don't, and frequently the doors will get left open. So auto closures, we can set them to three, four, or five minutes. So once the truck pulls out, it'll stay open for three or five minutes, and then it'll auto close behind them to resecure the building. The current openers that we have are non-compatible to adding these safety devices to them, and as a result, we gotta replace the entire garage door openers or trolleys. And so we do have a bid to replace all four of them for a total cost of six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars installed.
Alright, we'll open it up to questions. I do ask that you raise your hand first to be called upon. Any questions?
I have none.
Okay, I just have one question, and when you say original, can you give me an idea how many years that is?
Whenever the building was built, probably in nineteen seventy-something for most of them.
Alright.
Maybe one of them was newer than that when they added on the additional stall, but for the most part, you know, we're talking twenty, twenty, thirty, forty years old.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with no further questions, we need a motion to approve resolution twenty dash oh three dash thirty-four, a resolution to authorize the purchase of four garage doors for the Wyoming Fire Department from Lake Country Doors in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by member Luger. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so approved. Number fifteen, to consider resolution twenty dash oh three dash thirty-five, a resolution approving amendment number one to broadcast tower site lease agreement between T-Mobile Company LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, successor in interest to ADP Minneapolis Inc. as the tenant, and the city of Wyoming, a Minnesota municipal corporation. Mr. Linwood, that was a lot.
It was. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is an agreement as we've been exercising, doing some housekeeping on these. We did one last year with Sprint. This is for our, to be clear, for our T-Mobile, I think there was a typo in one of your write-ups, but for T-Mobile on top of that tower. We've been working with T-Mobile and with our legal counsel in finishing this agreement. So essentially, this is leased for another ten years, and then it can be, the agreement can be done up to an additional time, excuse me, four times for, at five-year terms. And then essentially, if there was any need for us to have any kind of cancellation or termination, we would have to give them written notice of providing them twenty-four months. The rent grade agreement will continue to be increased by three percent annually or by a CPI U-index, so whatever is a greater at this time, usually it's, depends obviously with economic components to that, but usually that three percent.
Okay, questions from council?
No, he answered mine.
I'm sorry, what?
He answered mine.
He answered yours, okay. Alright, then we need a motion to approve resolution twenty dash oh three dash thirty-five. I'm not gonna read it all. A resolution approving amendment number one to broadcast tower site lease agreement between
So moved.
T-Mobile. Alright, do we have a motion to approve? Joe, did you make a motion to approve, Joe?
Yes, I did.
Perfect, we have a motion to approve by member Zieros. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so approved. Number sixteen on our agenda, to consider the hiring of Kelly Dumas for the assistance of the administrator at the starting rate of thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents an hour and a tentative start date of March thirtieth, twenty twenty. Mr. Linwood, did I pronounce her last name correctly?
You did, that is appropriate.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, we've been going through this process, to give some background on the candidate and the process, we reviewed and scored thirty-one applications for this position. We conducted first round interviews, and top of that, the top candidates from the first round were brought back for second interviews and final interview. The final interview candidates went through another round of questions and then a skill practical exercise that was put into the position for a personality profile review and some of their core competencies in intelligence background. A complete background check and employment verification has been completed on the candidate. Kelly Dumas was the candidate that was selected for the position. Most recently, Ms. Dumas has worked, is working at Dakota County as a physical development administrative project coordinator. There, she has experience in administration, human resources, community engagement, and finance. Prior to going to Dakota County, Ms. Dumas worked for the city of Adina and the city of Edora, Kansas, where she gained experience in administration, boards and commissions, human resources, finance, community development, policy development, communications, and economic development. Ms. Dumas received her Masters of Public Administration from the University of Kansas and a Bachelor's of Arts from Gus Davis Adolphus College. She is also a member of the MCMA, ICMA, and APMP, the International City Management Association. Based on her qualifications and making the recommendation to the city council that we start her at wage step three of the position at thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents per hour with a six-month probationary period. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, questions from council?
Questions.
Alright, member Jaeger?
What does a physical development administrative project coordinator do?
Sure, at Dakota County, looking at Mrs. Dumas' resume, she was intricate in a lot of their different capital improvement. She actually was kind of the person, the project coordinator, to update their capital improvement plan, which for Dakota County, it's a lot different than the city of Wyoming. You're talking about essentially millions and millions of dollars, a capital improvement plan. She's also done a lot of work within community engagement in regards to projects at the county. She's also done that community engagement component through the city of Adina as well, through comp plans, things like that. I think that'll be a valuable tool that she'll bring to the city. Along with her project management, she's been in charge with HR policy updates, doing employee, employee programs for updates in their HR program. So essentially, it's just a lot of different project management work that actually hits a lot of different areas, and I think a lot of areas that will be applicable here to the city in this position.
And then what did she do, what was her job for Adina and Edora?
In, for Edora, she was, I apologize, for the, for the city, let me start with city of Adina. For city of Adina, she was an ICMA candidate there, where she did a one-year stay at the city of Adina, working on multiple projects, including parks, community engagement, comprehensive plan, a multitude of different projects that she did there. For the city of Edora, it was a, I believe, an internship position through, when she first graduated with her master's degree, that she did, worked there, and that was approximately, I believe, about a year and a half as well.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say that, you know, I would really, I have no problem going from deputy clerk and hiring another deputy clerk. I do not know if, I do not think that upgrading the position to an assistant city administrator is needed at this time.
Alright, member Schilling?
I have nothing here.
Alright, member Luger?
No questions.
Number Zieros?
I had an opportunity to talk to Rob a little bit about, get some questions answered about her background, and she appears to be highly qualified. I think she's gonna make a great addition to the city hall.
Yeah, I had actually a chance to interview with her during the second rounds. She comes very qualified. As we grow as a city, which we know that we have several new developments coming in, as we grow as a city, it's good to have an assistant city administrator. I thought the applications, thirty-nine of them, I believe?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one of them that came in, and it was quite an extensive list of qualifications that we wanted, and she did a really good job, had some great ideas. So I believe it's a great addition. So with that, I will move to approve hiring Kelly Dumas for the assistant city administrator. Did you want to do that, Mr. Schilling? For you?
Sorry.
You alright?
Yeah.
At a starting rate of thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents an hour and a tentative start date of March thirtieth, twenty twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
We have a second by member Zieros, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Alright, number seventeen, to consider mayoral declaration number twenty twenty dash one, declaring a local emergency. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, this is a declaration that we have brought to you tonight. This is a declaration of a local emergency from the mayor with, currently with the status of what's happening right now and the results of the COVID nineteen outbreak. We have some examples that, on March eleventh, the World Health Organization determined a COVID nineteen outbreak, and declared, and President Trump declared a national state of emergency. On March thirteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Tim Walz issued Emergency Executive Order twenty oh one, declaring a state of peacetime emergency to address the COVID pandemic in Minnesota. Tonight, at the Shisago County Board of Commissioners meeting, they will make a declaration of local emergency as well in Shisago County, probably concurrently doing that as we are now. And then essentially, the spread of COVID nineteen in the United States and Minnesota has raised serious public health concerns. Essentially, this declaration is for the mayor, you don't need to vote on that, that'll come with the next resolution. But essentially, this will allow us to enter into some of our emergency management techniques with the county and other partners, and allow for us to have some other abilities as far as purchasing, and the next resolution will go through some of the other factors that we'll take into consideration as far as city operations, city facilities, and other things that may factor with this. This, also, when we do this declaration of a local emergency, it may allow us to be eligible for some state and federal funding through anything that we may have to do as part of this.
Question?
Question, alright, member Jaeger?
Now, I know, I remember you, you know, over the years, we've talked about a city's emergency operations plans, but did we ever do a pandemic response plan?
No, we don't have a formal pandemic response plan in place relative to our emergency operation plan. I think that's part of the reason for the declaration, is so that we can continue to develop that based on this particular pandemic, because it is fast-moving in a fluid situation. We do need to be able to make some decisions that are, you know, quick and decisive and don't necessarily always have the opportunity to bring council together to ratify. So that's part of the reason for the declaration, but we do not have a generalized pandemic response plan in place as part of our formal emergency operation plan.
Okay, I was just wondering how you, if we don't have a plan, how do we invoke it?
So we invoke the emergency operation plan, which is adaptable and adaptable to whatever circumstances we have. Pandemics are, you know, they're unique to whatever we're experiencing. I mean, if it was an Ebola, we'd probably be looking at a much different response than we are with a CBO nineteen, COVID nineteen response. And so the emergency operation plan allows us that latitude and flexibility to be able to move fluidly with this particular, and based on the type of virus that it is, it'll be different responses than maybe a different virus. But this does give us that latitude to make decisions as a leadership team and a united command, you know, with myself and Rob and Chuck in order to manage employees and take necessary steps with our operations and also with our facilities in order to protect our staff, the public, and act accordingly, in conjunction with whatever CDC recommendations are, and cohesively with whatever the state continues to develop, on sometimes an hourly basis, if not daily.
I also think that we're in uncharted territory based on our local economy as well. I don't know how you plan for that. This is definitely a piece to it that you can't plan for, and it's out of our hands, and so we need to make sure that we have what we can in place to help our businesses as well. So are there any further questions?
I would just like to add something, Madam Mayor. I've spent the last twenty-three hours solid on this in the city of West St. Paul. As Chief had explained, you know, this is something that we really didn't have in place either, and we are actually daily meeting on this. We've officially closed all public entrance down, all public everything. We have modified everything in our daily processes to combat this, and we're kind of following along with what the state, Department of Health, CDC is instructing us to do. So this is also gonna be a learning curve for a lot of the cities out there. I've been in touch with over a dozen different municipalities, because a lot of us building officials sit on the EOC committee, and it's, it's been interesting and it's been very trying, and we just are all kind of sharing all of our information throughout the state, and we've been doing it quite actively for the last, well, since Saturday is when it all really ramped up here locally and in the state as well, so that was all I had.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, we don't need to approve this, right? So we'll just go on to number eighteen?
Officially, you are making the declaration. The declaration declared a local emergency.
Okay. Alright.
This is your authority to make declarations as the chair, and I want to go on and on with all the entire council, the decision you're making.
Alright, do I need to state that as well? Or we're good?
I would say, I would say you are making mayoral declaration.
Okay. Okay, so I, Lisa Iverson, Mayor of the city of Wyoming, is making the mayoral declaration number twenty twenty one, declaring a local emergency, which I never thought I would have to do, so.
Well, it's, as councilmember Schilling said, this is happening all across the state, multiple cities.
Yeah, and I appreciate the staff for keeping us well informed. Number eighteen, to consider resolution twenty dash oh three dash thirty-six, a resolution enacted pursuant to Minnesota statute section twelve dot twenty-nine, extending the period of a mayor declared local emergency. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, council, as Mr. Lunin had explained, that this is the resolution essentially that backs the declaration from the mayor for the city council's review in this resolution. It all follows under state statutes twelve point two-nine and twelve point three-six in regards to emergency contracts agreements in regards to the COVID outbreak. You can see as we go for, into this a little more depth after we get through our wherashes in regards to the, it explains unnecessary agreements if we need any. I think more importantly, and this is a few things that I want to take time to go through on this in regards, that number six, and that would be under state statute thirteen D zero two one, that's explaining that as a staff, that we think it's important that moving forward until, at least until the council's April seventh, two thousand and twenty council meeting, that as under that, now that the governor has, had declared an emergency, that we would act on that for all of our meetings, that that would be done electronically. We would suggest that the council meet at that April seventh, twenty twenty, that we would do that one electronically as well. At that time, we can review the meeting status and how we are meeting and how we will go forward. Also with this, that we would declare that all city facilities would be closed to the public until such is a time no longer impractical or imprudent, and will be reviewed again at the April seventh, twenty twenty Wyoming City Council meeting. You're seeing this pretty much standard through the entire metro and outstate in regards to public facilities. The Wyoming library actually closed today at five PM indefinitely. We think it's important in regards to our due diligence for the spread, for not only for safety of our council members, commission members, staff, and the public to close this. We still will be providing essential services. The city hall, city police department, city public works will all be staffed, including building department. We will be having, taking steps already for the building department. Plans will be able to be dropped off in the front vestibule area, and that'll be locked during the day, but open to anyone that wants to drop that off. And as long, we'll also be sending out information in regards to our utility billing customers in regards to being able to use the Dropbox, pay online, call, use ACH, whatever you may need. But we will be putting up signage and making announcements to the community that we are here, we will not be allowing access to the public.
Alright, are there any further questions?
Yeah, I have a bunch of them.
Okay, member Jaeger?
I would take it this is the same that was just passed in Forest Lake?
The city of Forest Lake, amongst, like I said, pretty much every, every city in the metro has passed a declaration of local emergency. Like I said, the biggest thing, once again, too, is to have an opportunity to be eligible, if there is funding, too, for state or federal funding, if that takes place.
That's fine, I was just more like the nuts and bolts and how this is gonna work. Like today, somebody had told me they were gonna come in for open forum, and we have no open forum. How are we gonna do open forum, let's say, at our next council meeting?
So today, what I put up, and maybe some of you have seen this post on our social media and on our, on our, excuse me, on our city website as well, is we will have an email that is available for people if they want to send emails in regards to have items addressed by the council. We can read those during our open forum. Under this, under the thirteen D dash zero two one, you actually can eliminate open forum, which some communities have taken that not to have a citizen comment period. I would like to keep it with the council, so that was the solution that we have for now. Obviously, we have the streaming, too, so along with that post to recommend to citizens or residents, business owners, that they can still watch and watch archived versions of our city council meetings. But I would direct them to that email that I posted today if they do have things they'd like to bring to the attention of the city council. Like I said, right now, we're recommending that we have the next meeting on April seventh to have that one done electronically, at which time we could review and see kind of where we're at, based on the MDH CDC recommendations and go from there.
So how would, how would that work in April seventh? Will somebody be coming over to my house to set up a remote?
No, no, essentially, you can do, under statute, you can do, it just has to be a virtual, and what that, what that states essentially is we just need to have the council members be able to hear each other. So right now, the plan that we would have in place would be essentially using a conference phone. The conference phone will be placed in here with staff, would be there myself, Mr. Lunin, or the mayor. We'd have to have someone present here, obviously, to operate it. We would have a call-in number for the city council members, and then they need by statute to be able to hear each other on the actual items.
But I don't need to see each other, we don't need to see each other?
You don't, for this, under this statute, you don't need to see each other, correct?
And then I don't need to see any, you know, whatever we would always put up there.
We would, we would still provide you best we could in your council packets, any necessary visuals for that, so we would probably not have, it would just be whoever in the room. We try to do some of those visuals for the public, but often the council is receiving those items, those visual items prior in your council packets, so.
It's also important, I mean, this, it's important to note that this isn't a, an electronic extension of the open meeting like we're doing with councilmember Zieros right now, where he's off-site in a situation. This is a emergency powers that are granted to the city under statute, and specifically, the statute enumerates in situations such as a pandemic. And so it may seem a bit odd that there's certain restrictions and certain limitations to how the meetings are going to be conducted, different than what we would do with councilmember Zieros, where he's calling in remotely. However, in consideration of the situation, this is the exact type of situation that section thirteen D oh two one calls for and allows the council to take these measures in order to ensure the safety of the public and the members of the council.
Oh, okay, so I don't have to post anything on my door, and if I use my Bluetooth and my husband can't hear, that's all perfectly acceptable?
Perfectly acceptable. The, the, number one accommodation that we are going to work to make, and it sounds like Administrator Linwood has already figured it out, is to allow the public to be able to call in to that same meeting that you guys will be a part of. They're obviously gonna be able to participate in the meeting, but they can at least listen in. I believe we'll still be recording the meetings, so that'll be something that everyone will be able to see. It really is a question of what is feasible for the city in consideration of what's going on. And so, yeah, all the situations that you described, you can do, because it's not the same as what we're, what we're doing with councilmember Zieros at this time.
Is our, is our equipment sensitive enough to?
We're looking right now, I've been evaluating for our meetings moving forward, a couple different technologies and subscriptions, and I think I found one that's gonna work well for this capacity. As Mr. Lunin said, we're still evaluating in regards of if the public could call in to listen, but we will most definitely, even if it's just a conference call, we will still stream that conference call, so we should, based on mic positions and how we would work that conference call, we believe that the public will still be able to actively listen to that meeting. Essentially, it'll operate the same as a normal council meeting. The only thing different is actually every time there is an item that the council needs to take action on, there will be a roll call vote. That's, under that statute, that thirteen D, you need to do that, so.
I was just concerned, like, if I have a bad rotten connection on my phone, or, you know, something's going on in the background, that you might not, you know, when you stream that you might not, you know, when you stream the phone call, you might not be able to hear it.
Essentially, it's about, it's essentially conference call technology. So, we, based on that, it should be clear, concise in regards if you have things going on in your background. We just probably ask council members if they can try to eliminate or find a quiet spot where they can hear everything, or there might not be distractions to other members. That'd be our best, best option.
All right. Just so you know, Mr. Linwood, we've gotten a couple texts that we're not streaming right now. So, technology is not working right now, but we will be able to post the video right after the meeting, so.
Looks like we're up home. I'll have to check on that, I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. Okay, that's right.
All right. So, we'll need a motion to approve Resolution 20-03-36, a resolution enacting pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 12 dot 29, extending the period of a mayor declared local emergency. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve by Member Luger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Number 19, to consider an emergency unpaid leave policy for the City of Wyoming employees. Mr. Linwood?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a, an item that you're seeing extensively throughout the metro once again. Essentially, this is emergency on leave policy that is, comes in with the COVID-19 outbreak. Essentially, what this policy would allow for is, in the City of Wyoming, employees have, they have sick time, comp time, and vacation time. If we had employees who had exhausted all of those due to COVID issues in regards prior to that or at the current moment, that they could be granted up to a maximum of 80 hours of extra sick time to be utilized if they did actually have the virus or have a family member that had the virus or needed to be quarantined. So, that, that is what it would be. It would be something that would be reviewed by the department head and myself, so that's equivalent of 10 days sick time. In regards to the, like I said, everything would have to be utilized before this. And then anything else, if the city, if the individual left before essentially paying back that sick time because they would accrue it once they came back, so they would go into a negative balance and accrue it back. They would be, would be necessary for them to pay the city back for that time when we had any kind of separation of employment or if someone quit.
I'm assuming they need to provide a doctor's note or some type of documentation?
The, with the MDH and the CDC, there are some things for this in regards, we would probably see if we could. I know that right now, a lot of the healthcare facilities are not providing some of that information. We would certainly do our best to try to receive that because it is applicable, this policy mainly for this COVID outbreak. So, we would most definitely try to get that from the employee. I just know that that's one thing that MDH has said that sometimes right now with the influx of patients, it's hard to get.
Okay. All right. Further questions? Number Jaeger?
Is this just for the COVID or can any flu?
The intention of this is when we did underflow, that it is under the COVID, so that is, that is the intention.
That's the intention, but the practical, not everybody who has COVID, if they have, will get tested for it. Or will they? I mean, I understand we don't have enough tests. And how do you know if it's just the latest strain of flu or the actual COVID itself?
So, my, my understanding of this policy as it's being implemented here is it's intended because of the COVID crisis. But Councilmember Jaeger, you're absolutely right that there's situations where it may be undeterminable if COVID is the core. Mayor Iverson, you know, the questions about getting the doctor's notes and, you know, when are we quarantining? If you've got family members at home. The reality is, is this policy is intended to address the disaster that we've declared, to address the pandemic. And to that extent, the policy does give discretion to both the department head and final say to the city administrator to authorize this leave or not. And so, a little bit, we have to give some discretion to our supervising employees. It's not going to always be a situation where we know 100% that it's COVID, but in consideration of everything that's going on, we need to have some extra precautions to allow people to stay home in consideration of this emergency. So, while that's the intent of it, you're right, it's not always going to be that's the case. So, we just got to give discretion to the department heads and the situation and take it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Is this, I have a question quicker. Is this, is this for a period of 80 hours? Is that the maximum amount? Or if the person were to be ill beyond a sick 80 hours and they had no more time left, would that be extended beyond the 80, 80 hours then or what?
Potentially, it could be. I guess for our, our policy on this, we thought the 80 hours was applicable in regards, it would give you 10 days. Right now, we're seeing quarantine times up to 14 days. And with the, with the potential for weekends, that that would allow for that individual to be through that quarantine period. If we have a case that we need to evaluate this more, we could always re-review this policy with the council or we could probably make an administrative call, I would think, as well on this, Mr. Lunin?
I, I would say so.
Okay.
And we could certainly amend it to make that more clear that it's, it's the ability. The other reality of this situation is that it's a very fluid situation. You know, as Councilmember Schilling said, this has been really rapidly happening over the last three days, particularly in Minnesota, nationally it's been growing, and internationally, it's a full-blown pandemic. And we know, and I've talked with Councilmember Linwood, that there is legislation that is being pushed both in the state and nationally to deal with this, this situation of paid sick leave and allowing people to be able to stay at home. In the event there's any sort of national or local legislation, it would preempt this policy, but there's nothing in place right now. And so, Administrator Linwood and I discussed, and we think it's appropriate to get something in place for the city just because things seem to be moving quickly, but it's also, you know, we know how fast sometimes government can move, so.
Yeah. Member Schilling?
One of the things that we implemented as well is we're actually tracking all of our hours that we're spending on this as department heads and managers because of the monies you're talking about. So, they have us logging, we've already set up accounting codes in our system to track our hours that we're spending on this. All our receipts for materials that we're purchasing, masks, gloves, suits. So, we're actively logging and tracking everything of this right now, and it's, it's consuming a lot.
Yeah. Completely correct. We are doing the same practice here. We have actually set up with our finance director funds for this for all of our departments to any kind of purchases we're making. But completely correct, if there is that component of, obviously, it's able to show if we were to have any kind of budgetary issues, if this were to get into a worse place, or if we're eligible for any kind of state or federal funding, we want to be able to have that clearly documented, the time that we put into it, as you stated, Mr. Schilling, exactly.
Number Jaeger?
Is there a sunset date on this?
At this current time, there is not. We could certainly bring it back to review for the council once we're, I guess, the Minnesota Department of Health or CDC, you know, relinquishes, I guess, where we're at, whether that's in, you know, a month, two months, three months. Yet to be determined.
I'm looking at the request for sick leave advance. And then the second bullet point, I am within the period the city administrator has declared the policy to be active. So, did know if it was, if there was sunset by that, if somebody who is signing this would think there is a sunset date to it or what?
We, in regards to that, that time, I think we can bring this back at council at some point in time in regards to the COVID. Once, you know, like I said, whether it's World Health Organization, CDC, MDH, when, when quote-unquote it's over, as Mr. Lunin said, we have an inkling that this is going to be superseded by some sort of state or federal policy anyways. But it's something we could certainly bring back to the council if they, if you wanted to have an assurance that the policy was no, essentially null and void and no longer existed for employees.
I didn't want anybody signing that and then saying, oh, is there a sunset? Is there a not sunset?
I think right now, we don't really know an answer to that in regards to what's with this potential outbreak. If, like I said, if it's going to be a month, two months, three months, I know.
Then you might want to make it clear when they sign it.
Well, the first, the first bullet point does state that this policy goes into effect at the declaration of the city administrator with a public health emergency. I mean, obviously, the intent here is because of the public health emergency. Again, the discretion falls on to the department heads and the city administrator to approve any of this leave. And we did talk about implementing a sunset, but at this time, it's just uncertain. So, I think the better practice is for us just to try and revisit this once.
That's fine. I just didn't want the verbiage to somebody misconstrue or misunderstand.
Member Schilling?
I, I'd just like to say, I understand where you're coming from, Member Jaeger. But I will say, as, as myself on this council, I'm dealing with this same exact scenario. I have perfect faith in Rob and staff to make that determination, so not having to add a deadline because we had deadlines on our stuff and it all went away.
Like I said, I wasn't asking to add a deadline. I was just asking if there was one and if, I didn't want anybody to come back and say, was there a deadline?
Right. No, I just, I have faith in the staff that they'll be able to make that determination.
Member Luger, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Member Zerwas, any questions?
No, no questions. They've been answered already, what's ahead?
All right. Sounds good. So, we need a motion to approve the emergency unpaid leave policy for the City of Wyoming employees. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Member Zerwas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second approved by Member Luger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So approved. Number 20, to consider a flexible workplace policy for the City of Wyoming employees. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This policy is presented to you tonight, again, much to do with in regards to our COVID outbreak. The reason that you're seeing this flexible policy in place tonight is we as prepared, as our EOC team and leadership team in regards for this, we've kind of looked at the essential services and our department heads. And if we did have someone who became ill or somebody who was necessary to have them quarantined, ability to have those employees have access to their workstations in something. Obviously, if they're sick or ill, they may not be actually taking sick time and be working. But in a situation where we had an individual quarantined offsite, it would be necessary to be able to have them still access their computer, especially for our department head and essential service, essential individuals. These would be offered to our department heads. And then in regards to our accounting clerk for payroll and different processes like that, and along with our other individuals who deal with building permits and point of sales and utility payments. So, we think that this policy is applicable and necessary for right now to prepare for anything that may be coming down the road. We don't, like I said, know the magnitude just yet of what this would be. But this is essentially a safeguard to be able to keep operations at City Hall going, even if those individuals were not present.
All right. Questions?
Yeah.
Number Jaeger?
And you're basically looking for, this is a case of somebody who is quarantined because maybe they have a family member, but is not sick themselves, and they could still perform most of their job from home.
Correct. That would be the applicable, most applicable likely, right? And, you know, someone's sick, maybe they'd be willing, but we're not going to, if someone's sick, I don't, if they're sick with the flu, probably not. Most likely for that quarantined individual or, right, for a family member.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because I don't know if they are actually sick, if they're going to want to work, but.
You're right. Correct. Right.
You know, if they're just quarantined with the whole household.
Right. Right. Where this would be most applicable. Agreed.
All right. Any more questions or comments?
I actually just have a question for Chief. This is not really in relation to this because you guys are all required to work. In the event that one of your staff becomes infected or is positive, is it up to the Department of Health to make that determination on who to quarantine on your staff? It's the way I understood it earlier today?
Yeah. So, a pandemic is managed by the health industry or the emergency health departments, Minnesota Department of Health, and also Shisago County Public Health. So, they become the main contact as far as determining who needs to be quarantined with length of period of time. We obviously would be informed. In the event that, yeah, we're in kind of a unique situation because we can't just simply shut down. So, we've already started taking precautions two weeks ago in order to try and reduce the potential for exposure. And this is kind of a tier-one response. In the event that, you know, we do have an affected employee, we have a tier-two response that will be implemented, which will be much more social distancing or separation, which would include probably some of our staff working remotely, whether they are or not affected by it in order to reduce secondary exposure or contamination. So, that policy does also apply. But our office staff, you know, or myself have the ability to work remotely. The officers, you know, they, they don't. They'll be more confined to, you know, out of the office or one person in the office at a time. They're already been encouraged to stay out of the office, stay in the car, stay in the community, increase visibility. So, we've already started the social distancing practices. But, you know, that's our greatest fear right now is that if we do get somebody affected within the organization, we do have limited staff, you know, how do we continue to provide essential services? So, we're going to take aggressive proactive measures to reduce the potential exposure so that we can do the best we can to maintain our staff in order to continue to provide those services. And if we are catastrophically affected, we do have those relations, relationships already established with our local partners. That will support us, and the state will support them as well.
Okay. That was, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right. If there are no further questions?
There are a couple further as I read through, further through this policy. The equipment, does it come back after the flexible working relate term or whatever you want to call it?
Correct. We would, we would do our best to put in place for the city employees to utilize city equipment. And yes, that would have to be brought back, most definitely. And then if we did ride into a situation where someone didn't have an opportunity to take city equipment, we could utilize their equipment with some different firewall and security parameters to be able to actually VPN into the desktops here at City Hall. So, that would also be an applicable use as well.
When you say that employees may not conduct any meetings in their homes, are you talking simply physical presence in the home? Or if they dial into a meeting?
Conduct physical presence, it wouldn't be, it would be a potential liability to the city or comp if they're actually hosting individuals in a.
In their home.
Right. Not for a conference call, a virtual call, that would be completely acceptable. Just we don't want a physical meeting of individuals being held at their home.
Okay.
Mayor Iverson, I'd like to ask a question here.
All right. Member Zerwas?
I couldn't hear what Chief Hoppy said there very good, so I'm going to ask the question again. If one of the officers were in contact with somebody that tested positive or had the virus, would that officer be put into a 14-day quarantine or put into quarantine long enough to be tested himself or herself and then put back to work?
Yeah. So, if we have contact with a confirmed individual and we have direct exposure, then we would test the employee. And based on the results of that test, they would probably be put on a temporary quarantine until we get the results back. And then based on the results, we would do a long-term quarantine if necessary. And so, we've already implemented some strategies within the fire department relative to people returning from out-of-country that, you know, we've done what we call reverse quarantine. And that's just to keep separation from the rest of the employees until we can confirm or they have an opportunity to ensure that they aren't affected. So, in the event that one of the employees or the officers are in direct contact, we will take the necessary precautions to do a temporary, you know, 48 or 72-hour containment until they can have the test done and confirmed whether or not they're affected. If they're not, they'll return to work. If they are, then they'll go into whatever the mandated quarantine is outside of the organization.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question.
Yep.
All right. If there are no further questions, we need to approve flexible workplace policy for City of Wyoming employees. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Member Schilling. Do we have a second by Member Zerwas? Second by Member Zerwas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So approved. All right. We are going to go to council reports, and we will start with Member Jaeger, please.
No report, but thank you all for watching, if you're watching.
All right. Member Schilling?
No report, unfortunately, I missed sewer commission due to this discussion we just got done talking about, so.
All right. Member Luger?
Have no report. Stay healthy.
All right. My report this week is I attended the EDA meeting, which was focused on how to reach more businesses and attract them to the City of Wyoming. I attended the Planning Commission, and I also attended the Shisago County Board of Commissioners meeting. I would like to thank the city staff and Safety Director Chief Hoppy for all the hard work and extra hours they worked as they implemented our emergency management plan. I want to thank our public work superintendent and employees as they make certain our water runs from our taps and our sewer system stays working during this time when most of us are just thinking about staying healthy and staying home. City staff is updating all COVID-19 information on our website, Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter. And as I know and we all know, we will do what Wyoming, the City of Wyoming does best, and that's to look after all our family, friends, and neighbors in our community. Most importantly, I would like to thank our police officers and their family and our. firemen and women and their families. Each and every day, you sacrifice your life to protect, to protect each and every one of us. Each year, we celebrate your hard work, your dedication, your accomplishments, anniversaries, braveries, and new promotions. However, it was canceled due to the COVID nineteen protocol. I would like you to know from my heart, thank you. Thank you for choosing to work in our city. Thank you for running into situations that many of us would want away from and thank you for being one of the finest police and fire department in the state of Minnesota. With that, we have something else we need to do.
If I could, I thought this was appropriate in the times that we have business to letter that I drafted from the city council and I'd like to take a review and see if this is something we can rebuild with the council if we support both this message and of what we have going on here at the city right now with our COVID. Members Zerwas, I can email you a copy of this too.
That would be good.
Okay.
You wrote this, Rob? Did you write this?
Correct, that before we.
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
Yep.
All right. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have we have member Zerwas adjourning from afar and we need a second would be member, member Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.